You're watching All About Alpena.
For those that don't know me, I'm Rich Solinger, City Engineer for the City of Alpena. I'll be introducing our design engineer here in a few minutes. But we wanted to take this opportunity, this is a big project for the City of Alpena and the community. Second Avenue being one of our primary crossing points of the Thunder Bay River. And being in the downtown, it is a critical route. The last time the bridge was rehanded was 30-plus years ago. So it is due, and Scott has got some slides a little bit later on, just to give you a flavor of the extensive amount of work that we do have to do on the project. Right now, where we're at, it's in the bidding phase through the Michigan Department of Transportation. Bids are due on the project on Friday, September 2nd. Actually, Scott will be back in town tomorrow, or excuse me, Friday, from 1:00 to 3:00. There will be walkthroughs, a mandatory pre-bid walkthrough with the contractors who are planning on bidding on the project. Within the project itself, the bid documents, there is a timeframe that has been established for the construction on the project. Well, the earliest they can get started by the time they get the bids in, it goes through the MDOT review and award process, is October 1 of this year, 2016. That may be a little bit aggressive, but we're hoping that they can meet that timeline with the review. The next critical phase of it will be May 1st, 2017, through June 8th of 2017. At that point in time, we have to physically close the structure down to through traffic. They have to pull all the grating, decking off from the bridge to be able to get to the steel underneath for sandblasting and painting, and some additional metal fabrication work underneath there. You know, people may ask, "Well, can't we do that under traffic?" We discussed that as a potential option to try to keep traffic flowing across the Second Avenue Bridge. The downside is, A, it was going to extend the construction schedule out, so you'd have a much, much longer disruption time. And actually, Scott and I were just talking before tonight's meeting, and they had one in...
Ohio?
Ohio, that they tried doing it under traffic, and it didn't get completed for in excess of a year, and is in litigation right now. So I think, I'm confident we made the right decision in doing this. We have had discussions with Jeff Gray, with the Glass Bottom Boat Tours, and we're working with them to make accommodations to, for them to have access downstream of the Second Avenue Bridge in the spring, next spring, when the bridge will physically be closed for that work to be done. Now, I say this is a big project, not just in terms of the work to be done, or the impact on the community, but in the cost of the project. We're looking at about $2.6 to $2.7 million in construction costs associated with this bridge project. Fortunately, that's not all on the City of Alpena. We received, for the actual construction, which I think was estimated at $2.2...
Right. Yeah. Initially.
Right around, yeah, right around $2.2 initially. 95%, 90% is paid by the federal government, 5% by the state of Michigan through the bridge funds, and then the City of Alpena is responsible for 5% of those funds. So we talk about a $2.7 million project, that's not all city funds. We do have to pay for, we have to pay for the design engineering and the construction engineering portions of it. Couple of things, as you came in, there was a brochure that was put together. It kind of lists out this timeline, lists out the detour, and gives our contact information for both Tetra Tech, Scott, and ourselves, the Engineering Department. But we've also put a slip of paper in there that what we'd like to do is have people email us, email Cassie Stone, that's our office clerk, with "Bridge Project" in the subject line. What she'll do is she'll put together a distribution list, so as we get updates, information, we can then send that out to the folks on that distribution list, and try to get as much information out as possible. Media does really good, but it's amazing how many people don't watch TV, don't listen to the radio, don't read the newspaper, or never talk to anybody, because they don't know anything that's going on. So we're going to try every technique we can to get the information out. Detour route, because we are going to have to detour this in the spring, and actually, Scott has a slide on this. We've been permitted by MDOT, we've gone through the MDOT permit process to use Chisholm Street as part of our detour, detoring traffic down Chisholm Street tonight, across 9th to Old Field, and Old Field back down to Second Avenue. That is probably the most direct route. We hope to also potentially intercept some of the traffic at 9th Avenue if they're coming in from the north, advise them that the detour ahead, and that this detour route, and that's a standard MDOT detour signing sequence that we will be following. With that, I will turn it over to Scott. This is Scott Buchholz from Tetra Tech. He was the lead on the design aspect of the bridge, and will be Scott and Bob Davatella, who's the inspection PE, will be the primary contacts from the city. You know, and, but he's got a few slides he'd just like to go through. He says, you know, wanted me to do most of the talking, but go ahead.
Right, yeah. As a bridge designer, not a public speaker, so apologize in advance. Yeah, like Rich was saying, I'm going to explain maybe a little bit more detail on the dates of why we did what. So the project is going to start October 11th. That's more for the contractor to start ordering his materials, take some field measurements so he can order the materials. There may be a little bit of work later this year, but the normal construction season for outdoor work ends November 15th, so there won't be a lot of work. The October 11th was starting the work beyond the two-board, the glass-bottom boat tour season, and if they did need to take a boat through, they can still get through for that first month. That was something the Coast Guard wanted. So it's not going to be permanently closed until November, and then it won't be opened or available to be opened again until the roadwork is done in June. So let's see, yeah, so I kind of touched on the waterway traffic. Okay, I'll talk about the detour a little bit. Now, barricades for the bridge are going to be at the end of the bridge, so, and there's going to be signs that say, "Business is open during construction." So, and the time of season, we're able to actually shorten that construction season to six weeks, because hopefully it's warmer weather, and they can do all of their work at the same time. They are replacing all the concrete joints across the bridge, actually, I can show you. Actually, this slide is going to talk about the navigation. We do have the Coast Guard permit, and also a permit from the Corps of Engineers for water or work underwater, which we have very little work underwater. They do not let us post boat traffic to go under the approach span, because it doesn't have the fenders, but small boats will be able to go through if they can fit. The water level's higher right now. So, and more slides of that.
Probably one of the other things, just with, because this is all, the structural steel is going to be sandblasted, painted, it's 100% containment, they have to contain all of the sandblasting materials, and the paint, et cetera, that comes off. So that, I mean, that is a huge portion of this project.
Right. They're going to, they're going to completely enclose this for the containment. So the grating actually is in excellent condition. So as Rich was saying, well, you might think, "Well, why do we got to take it off?" Well, there's fewer bolts on the substringers, and they go full width all the way across the bridge. So they're going to unbolt it from the substringers, and they're going to pick the grating up all in one big unit. And they also got to take off the steel curbs. So once that comes off, the bridge is closed until they're done. And at the same time, they're going to have this whole thing tarped. And then the other work that they're going to be doing at the same time, we're going to, we're going to do an epoxy overlay on the sidewalks, kind of cover up some of the rust. And then the road, we're going to do a epoxy healer-sealer, which you need warmer weather to do the epoxy healer-sealer. That would be actually very difficult to do that in the winter. And all the joints on the bridge are being replaced. Some of them are leaking, and there's some concrete spalling at the joints. So all that's all going to get condensed into that six-week period. This was one of the walls that was in the worst shape on the outside. Actually, most of what we're doing on this project is concrete repairs, and steel repairs, and steel painting. This wall is actually in such poor condition, we're going to just do a concrete overlay over the whole wall. You do small patches, they're just going to pop off again in a few years. And we just, you know, got some random photos. Inside, during the winter, they can do work, so they're going to do concrete patching, and they can heat the inside, the bascule piers, and we also want them to do all the painting inside the bascule piers in the wintertime. As you can see, the bridge needs work. You really don't want to let it keep going, and then the steel, you're going to have too much section loss on the steel beams or the steel reinforcement. More patching, there's quite a few areas, and we're going to do, you know, any random repairs that needed to be done, we're also going to do those. This is one of them, the girder's rubbing up against the side of the opening. And I got several slides here on steel painting. As you can see, it's rusted. This is actually in the bascule period. Some of the secondary members, they're rusted right through, need to be replaced. This is underneath the decking, the bracing, that's rusted pretty bad. That's actually going to be completely replaced at the end of the bridges, or the spans. And we got some other few areas that are definitely in need of repair. So there's going to be supports above the bridge on the deck that hold this beam in place while they chip out the concrete underneath here and patch it. More photos of the need for painting. Some of this is the mechanical stuff as well. These are like the racks, they got to take out some of these bolts, replace them if they're rusted too much, and then they got to paint inside. So some of this work is a little more complicated than your regular paint job. We're also, you know, doing some repairs on the bearings. There's one that's rusted, not working too well, and they're going to re-level anything that's not level anymore. And I think that was it.
Well, you know, and I guess, you know, when you look at these, you look at some of these pictures, it's like, I don't know if I want to drive across the bridge anymore, but one of the things that, when we, they were up here, and they did a very detailed inspection, they spent about a week crawling all over the bridge. And, you know, I asked the question, you know, you know, what kind of shape is the bridge in? And the comments I got was, actually, this bridge is in very, very good shape for its age. I mean, it's originally 1923 construction, for its age, and the fact that it's been 30 years since it's had a rehab, it's actually in very good shape. You know, we, going through there, I learned a lot. There's actually, and Scott was pointing them out to me, there's bolts in there that, because of the tolerances, they did not want any movement in that bridge, the bolts were actually machined to fit the holes that were drilled into the steel plates, as opposed to the plates trying to be drilled to match the bolts. So very detail-oriented construction plan when it was built. It's a testament that it's in the condition it is. But I think that the photos really show that there is a dire need to get in there and do the rehab before we give some additional consideration that could jeopardize the quality of the bridge. Some of that steel that Scott pointed out underneath the decking, it's called windbracing, and that keeps it from shifting in the up position, and that's what, you know, we don't want that to happen, so we've got to get it replaced. You know, this bridge sat for 20 years without, with very minimal openings. It's actually, you know, one of the best things we can do is to keep opening this bridge and keep it maintained. So with that, I guess we will open it up to questions that anybody may have on that.
Have you yet to bid at all?
It's actually being bid right now through the Michigan Department of Transportation. It's in the September 2nd bid letting that MDOT will be holding.
So you have one contractor that comes in, or multiple subcontractors?
Well, there's going to be a prime contractor, and then he's going to have subs. So there's a fair amount of electrical work. I guess I didn't point that out too much. We are replacing the signal poles and, you know, the signal heads.
Gates.
The gates are being replaced. You know, some wiring, some limit switches, other electrical stuff. We do have a subconsultant that did the design for the mechanical/electrical, so I don't know a whole lot about that, but still, it's a fair amount of work. So usually, there's going to be a prime contractor, and he may even sub out the painting work, and even the machinery painting, that's another type of specialty, and they will most certainly sub out the electrical work. So the, be a, you know, consultant or contractor team that will be bidding on this.
What are the chances it's going to take a lot of them six weeks?
Well, then they got to start paying penalties. So it's in their best interest to get it done.
You know, I think, you know, realistically, I mean, we could have, we could still be having solid winter into May, and that may, that may slow them down as far as the start, which would drag it out. But right now, this is the timeline that is set up in the bid. Basically, to go beyond this timeline, they have to be able to justify a reasoning behind the delay that caused them to go beyond. And winter weather, if we had cold weather that they couldn't paint, et cetera, wouldn't be a legitimate time for them to delay. Again, I will never bet against Mother Nature, I'm always going to lose, but that is, I think it's a very aggressive timeline that they've got set up, but the contractors all know that going into the bidding process. And like I said, there will be a walkthrough Friday from 1:00 to 3:00 of the bridge that is mandatory for all the contractors, and I'm sure Scott's going to hammer that schedule home to them again during that walkthrough.
You know, they're just going to be working four or five days, or working a full week straight, or...
That's up to the contractor. With this schedule, I think there's, there's not going to be a lot of downtime. I mean, he may, well, like I said, there's a variety of different people. There may be somebody that needs to work on putting in motors and doesn't want somebody else in their way, you might not see him, or there might be, you know, somebody doing scaffolding underneath, or, you know, they need to put that in first. So there should be work, especially, once, painting season officially starts May 1st.
I guess when you say painting season, MDOT, Michigan Department of Transportation, is this, is this, has to be built according to their standards? They establish a painting season, painting season according to their block...
Right, and there's, yeah, so there's reasons why they did that. You can heat areas, but it's risky, things can go wrong, so you want to wait until warmer weather, and they've determined May 1st is as soon as you want to start the painting season. So that's kind of how that date got put in there.
You had in here that May 1st to June 8th is when you plan on closing Second Avenue?
Yes.
So it'll be open till then, or limited?
That's, I mean, there could be some short closures if they, if they're, they have to have some equipment out there, very similar to when I had to have, could get MDOT's inspection crew out there, I had to shut the bridge down to get some equipment out there. But they're physically blocking off the road 24 hours a day, seven days a week, starts May 1st, and then it runs through that June 8th timeline. This gentleman's from the post office. Oh, yes. You know, they're right there, so...
There's significant delays in my operation for numerous reasons. Mail carriers going out, my trucks use Second Avenue for leaving. Might not be too bad by going through 9th, moving, probably five minutes, just making sure that we're not going to do anything around the holiday season, because it's just going to be mad.
You don't want to close that last couple, that last month of December?
No.
No, no. There could be date closures for a lane closure, you know, moving some equipment in or something, but there's really not a whole lot of reason for them to be out there prior to when they really close the road, because, I mean, it wouldn't be efficient anyway. So, but they will be working underneath, so I don't know, maybe if they got to unload some, some of their formwork that's going to be placed underneath, I mean, it could be taking a lane, and there's like a week...
Spreads closures, yeah.
Right, and the week prior to the road closure, that's when they can officially start placing their formwork underneath the bridge. So that gives them a week to get that in place, so as soon as they close the road, they should be painting.
But that would be under lane closures.
That's not till May or anything, so...
Right.
Now, if you really wanted us to close in December, we could for you.
Y'all mentioned that it's been 30 years since you did this before. How long can we expect this to expand in life of the bridge?
Now, the paint should last a little longer than it did previously. Current practice is now they put a sealant, kind of, you know, like a caulk, between every layer of metal. So as you can see, some of the photos, there's rust between the metal, and, you know, and that expands, causes problems. So now when they seal it with caulk, and, wow, it's a huge quantity, it's thousands of feet, they get caulked, and then you paint over top of that, and that'll help it last a little bit longer. But still, it's going to start rusting again, you know, 20, 25 years, but it should last longer than it did last time. And we're doing some other things different, too. We are doing some work in the, like, on the roofs of the machinery, sealing that to keep water off one of the bearings, so there's a couple other things to work. I did have a photo of some rusted bolts in there. We're actually going to completely caulk that steel rack closed so water can't get in there to begin with. So whatever we can do to make it last longer, you know, we try to do it.
I think the biggest concern, obviously, is how long it's closed to our business owners that are separated from downtown on the other side. My question, and they might be wondering, I guess, as well, is that if it's in the bid process, that there's a deadline for this to be completed, and you talked a little bit about, you know, if the weather's bad, they could submit a, you know, an excuse, if you will, for not getting it done. Who's, what entity is responsible for that deadline and finding them for the deadlines? Is that MDOT? Is that the City of Alpena?
We, we have a contract with MDOT. The actual contract with the contractor will be a Michigan Department of Transportation contract. So they will, they will invoke the penalties unless they have a document that gives them a time extension beyond June 8th. So if June 8th's here, the paperwork isn't in place, they can start invoking. That doesn't mean the paperwork couldn't follow up by the penalties. Now, I don't remember what the penalties were for a day, it was pretty stiff.
Yeah, it's enough, it's not cost-effective to, you know, delay, so... I mean, it's an aggressive schedule, but it still is doable. But they can't, like, do a week's worth of work and come back two weeks later and resume it and still plan on finishing on time. They would get penalized for that. They can't just, like, walk off the job because they got another job that they're busy on, and they can't do them both at the same time. That's, that doesn't work as an excuse, so... So hopefully, they get out there and they get it done.
You know, the downside is, is with the economic downturn that we've seen in the last 10 years, there's been a huge reduction in the number of bridge contractors. A lot of bridge contractors felt that there wasn't enough work to keep them going. We were just talking, right now, probably the biggest firms, biggest bridge builders in the state and surrounding area have all pulled plans on this, so they're at least looking at it.
I mean, we look at it, the only reason why I come here, I know nothing about bridges, but went and seen if you could do it one lane, going across with the light like they did on 32 when they redid that bridge, and it takes some heat out there, because back in the late 70s or 80s, the friendly car one was there, and when they tore up Second Avenue, very detrimental to our business, and a lot of businesses almost closed up because of that being there no longer. There's some, you know, they have a hard time doing bridges that way.
And that, John, we, like I said, we didn't look at that, we were saying, we could do it under... If we were to say, we could do it under traffic.
Well, and that's it. And I know there's other things there and the thing we're looking at, just like on Ninth Avenue there when Chisum, they're not going to change that. Like, if you go there now and you got three, four power backup to get on Chisum just because the light takes, you've got more of the fault on Chisum.
Right. But I mean, the number of reasons actually are pretty lengthy. We actually are going to repair the center locks. So, once you take the center locks out and then the gear mechanism, it's going to bounce. So, once a...
This is a good point, John. I mean, as far as the ninth, they have new light. I mean, we can ask MDOT if they can alter that timing.
Just because otherwise, you're going to have people with imperfect examples with my needs. This is delivery. You know, we have two delivery guys. We're going to probably have two port delivery guys just to get off and around. It's going to take longer. And you'll have people trying to take the side streets and it's just going to be kind of hectic on that aspect.
Well, see, they are fixed. It's like 15 minutes of free delivery.
Oh, they're not free.
So, Rich, what's your authority here? MDOT's called the shots or the Tetra is? What's the city got to do with keeping it on the schedule?
Basically, I mean, basically, we're turning it over to Tetra Tech. We had to submit the paperwork. Tetra Tech is the project engineer on it. They are going to, I mean, they're going to push the contractors to meet and adhere to that schedule. MDOT is going to, you know, they, like I said, they have very specific timelines.
So, John asked a minute ago, four to five days a week, what are they going to work? Is nobody going to be there working Friday, Saturday, Sunday? And Scott's answer was, that's up to the contractor.
It really is. I mean, he's, it's up to him to lay out his work plan. He knows that he has to get this much, you know, this section of the bridge done in this timeframe and he has to be done by June 8th. It's up to him to schedule it. If he feels he could do it in four days a week and then, you know, maybe some of the subs are working the other three, or he feels he needs six days a week to get that work done, that's where, you know, we can't, we can't tell the contractor how to do his job. We can tell him what needs to be done, when it needs to be done by. But it's up to him to develop his work plan to meet that timeline.
So, has he had a timeline, right? Where the different subs come in and work?
Now, they do submit a schedule at the start of the project and that does need to get approved and they need to follow their schedule. I mean, a lot of what we do is, everything's to MDOT standards and so part of their policies is they got to submit their schedule.
When the subs will be working, when the painting will take place, etc. And that all gets, that gets reviewed by both these folks and MDOT project. There's also an MDOT project engineer on this who will be reviewing all the paperwork. So, they will look at it. And if they don't feel something's reasonable in that timeline, they can, you know, send it back and say, I think you need to redo this, relook this. But I haven't seen, I haven't seen a project schedule yet that doesn't use 100% of the timeframe that they're allowed. If they get it done early, that's great, but they always set up their timeline, use 100% of the time available.
Well, like John, on the other side of it, it's a considerable burden if it goes eight weeks, nine weeks, 10 weeks. And if you've got all these subs working under the bridge, let's say, where nobody works on Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
They said their timeline, they have to meet that. I can't call them up and say, hey, we got nobody working here, get up there and work. They run the risk of running that into those penalties clauses.
Now, that the building has gone across the street here, are they going to widen that outbound where the sidewalk is? Because the sidewalk comes out on the west side of the road, on the west side of the bridge. Their original intent, I believe, was because the building stuck out so far. But when you're taking a right turn off of this street here onto the bridge, it's such a narrow swing and you have two lanes of traffic coming at you. I was wondering if they were going to widen that back out to what a normal road should be.
Now, you're getting into the two-way street stuff. No, that was actually one of the things we were looking at doing at that corner. It's not part, it's not part of this project.
That's part of the two-way street thing?
It was part of the two-way street thing, but whether it goes forward or doesn't, there's certain elements of it that we are going to look at to implement, no matter what. That's, that's one of them, Carter Streets and otherwise, some of the current modifications.
Is that project still on the board, sir?
It was tabled by council at the last meeting, but where it goes from there, I...
Just so you know, that's going to have another significant setting in on what I do.
Is there any way to incentivize getting it done earlier? So, if they do, they could have whatever? That way, they'd be more inclined to work because it is a huge concern for the businesses.
Yeah. There are, I mean, there's, incentives are one element of MDOT contracting that is used occasionally. I don't, honestly, I don't think it's going to have much impact here. Wouldn't really have any impact only because the amount, the painting is going to be the critical element, starting in May. And I suspect that they're going to be all of six weeks sandblasting and painting in there to try to get that done, five weeks in there to get it done. So, I don't, because they can't start until May 1st, I don't think there's any incentives that would even potentially go into play. But in either case, it was not set up that way.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't set up that way.
Can that be communicated to MDOT, though? How critical it is that they meet that deadline and that our businesses are very concerned? And anything we can do to get it done earlier?
Yeah, so we actually, pretty likely, there'll be a pretty big walkthrough Friday. Scott, I'm sure is going to hammer on that. Once the contract is awarded to a contractor, then we have to have a pre-construction meeting. At that point in time, it will be hammered home again that that timeline is basically dropped dead unless there's, like I said, snowfall on May 10th and the camping and something like that. Again, just our contact information is in here. Well, our telephone number to reach the engineering office, our email address, that it's just listed as engineer@elpina.mid.us. When that goes into there, it gets distributed to Steve, Shannon Filinski, myself, and Cassie Stone, our office clerk, so that everybody is aware of it. We will, we will have a better idea probably after, probably September 6th, by the time we get all the information as far as how the bids came in, who the bidder is. Then it's our intention to keep posting updates as often as possible. Once we get, you know, a firm's start date, we can post the construction schedule once that's issued. That's not typically till the pre-construction meeting. But we could post as much information. You know, it's, it's a lot easier for us to post that information out there where it's readily available so that you can find it easily. You know, but if not, you know, if you can, you can certainly call us, we'll relay it. Again, you know, if we can get the email addresses, we'll be sure and send out those updates. I'm not going to say weekly, but, you know, we will send them out randomly throughout the project or if there's some critical element that comes up. Both Tetra Tech, either somebody from their office or someone from Kiron Engineering who they are subcontracting with will be on site 100% of the time. And we are, we can basically see the bridge from our office, so we can keep track of it. And if there's any questions that come up that didn't think of, you're halfway home, think about it, don't hesitate, give us a call, fire us an email. We will get back to you just as soon as we possibly can. If we don't have the answer, we'll try to find out the answer. Thank you very much for coming. Take time out of your evening.